And to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, in the rule of liberty and justice for all.
Alderman Tobin, Alderman Jean Francois, Alderman Johnson, Alderman Ray, Alderman Kleiner,
President.
Alderman Green, Alderman Witt, Alderman Massey, President Rodriguez, all is present.
Approval of minutes, no move. We have a motion for February 4th and January 21st by Mr. Massey, seconded by Alderman Johnson. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Correspondents?
We have a request for a subdivision lot line change for 20 and a half to dash 30 Low Avenue. And then 20 and a half dash 30 Low Avenue in the rear. And subdivision request for a lot line change at 15 Mercer and 16 Warren.
Forward to committee.
That's it for this evening.
For the good of the city.
We have one, I'm sorry. We have one speaker this evening, Susan DePue.
Hi, good evening. I haven't gotten up and spoken about anything in a long time, but I'm concerned about the traffic issue on Prospect Street where I live. And my suggestion would be to do something that's not permanent, to do it on a trial basis. And one of the thoughts that I had was if you're going to maybe propose having traffic go one direction at the lowest part of Prospect, that you do it in one direction for one month, maybe, and then the other direction another month. It may, that may be too confusing, but I would not do a permanent thing until you find out if it really works. That's just my thoughts. Okay, thanks.
Thank you.
That's it for public comment.
Okay. Remarks of department heads, economic development?
Good evening, everyone. Just an update on our community development agency, housing rehab program, homeownership. We do have someone in contract for 84 Linden. We're moving along with Washington Street. That's coming along very nicely and that hopefully we'll have a buyer soon for that as well. This Friday, we have a ribbon cutting at Resto Palm on Academy Avenue. It's 107 Academy Avenue. It's a new Haitian restaurant, and that's at four o'clock this Friday. Join us for the ribbon cutting. Also Saturday at the Paramount Theater, we had the SUNY Orange Community Orchestra at 7:30. Come and enjoy that wonderful program on Saturday. And that's all I have for this evening. If anyone has any questions.
Any question from Maria, Alderman Kleiner?
Thank you. We have a resolution on the agenda appointing Dr. Johnson, Alderman Johnson, to the Local Development Corporation.
Yes.
I don't know what that is. I know what the ADA is, I know what your office is, I know what the IDA is, I don't know the Local Development Corporation.
The Local Development Corporation is a public authorities corporation, just like the IDA and the CDA. So the LDC, Local Development Corporation, has been set up for the O&amp;W station for the historic and new market tax credit programs. So we, we had to initiate an LDC for that.
Okay, have we done that yet?
That's what we're doing now. So we have the bylaws and all that. Now we're getting ready to form the board and start the meetings.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. DPW Commissioner?
Good afternoon, all. We'll start off with the reservoirs. We're at 92%. Still, we have unusual dry weather. The expectation, just for comparison, in January this year, we only had .9 of an inch, less than one inch. Our average in January over the years is 2.84 inches. So we're short about two inches in deficit for, for the month of January. Still, our reservoirs are good and we are ready to pump from our supplemental water sources when we have to. We're in good shape. Before you tonight, there's a resolution for spring cleanup. If you approve it, it will, we will start on March 24th with the first ward. March 31st will be the fourth ward. April 7th will be third ward. And April 14th will be the second ward. And for electronics drop off will be May 24th. And that's for computers, monitors, printers, so please do not put them out during the spring cleanup week. Do not put them out during the spring cleanup week. Wait until the May 24th, then you can drop them off free of charge. If you have any, any air condition or anything that has freon gas in there, they will be charged of $25, not for us, for the company that picks it up. Anything with freon gas. That's the cost for disposal. Otherwise, everything else is for free. You will have a brochure in there on our website telling you exactly like we do every year, what is allowed, what's not allowed, how many items, and so on and so forth. We urge everyone, should the council approve it again tonight, we urge everyone not to put out their junk outside their house until the weekend before the week that your ward is due for pickup. You can call us if you don't know where you are, DPW 343-3169. And we can tell you when, when your ward is and when you can put it out for, put out your junk for pickup by city, DPW. The other thing is city court construction is moving along very well, and we're very happy with the progress so far. There's minimal issues came up with the construction, some minor plumbing issues and unforeseen gas lines within the walls that we did not know where they were before, but that, that is minor stuff. Also, we opened the bids with the board of estimate for the garage, the parking garage across from the Paramount Theater. Basically, it's Washington at the lower end of Washington parking lot, and that will extend the, the south. And Washington parking lot will build a parking deck there, so you'll be able to park either under it or on top of it. And the bids came a little bit somewhat high, so we're doing, not, I wouldn't say that, but it's, it's four and a half million dollars, basically. And we are doing value engineering right now to see what we can do to cut the costs down, so we're going to be meeting with the engineers, hopefully this Friday, and then if we have to, we'll have a conversation with the contractor as well, the first, the lowest two bidders, to see what we can do to trim down the cost. But we did bid it with cast-in-place concrete or pre-cast concrete, so that will have all the options available for us. Today, we met with Orange and Rockland regarding rerouting many of the power lines in that area in there, and we are working on that with Orange and Rockland. And my last comment for this evening is, obviously, the street department did tremendous job with, you know, working way over 24 hours, nonstop, to, to keep our streets safe from the snow and ice that took place over the weekend. And again, remind our residents to please keep your cars off the road and, and just work with us. And, you know, the police department cannot be everywhere to take your cars or throw them away. We cannot be everywhere. Well, our guys will have to drive, but they got their hands full driving a huge truck in there the size, size of this room by the, by the time he puts the wing plow and the front plow. So the point I'm trying to make is, if you see some cars parked in there causing obstructions, you can call the police department at night, whatever it is. You don't have to give your name. You just give the address, the location, and that's it. And that will help us out, that will help the police department out. I don't mean to speak for the chief, he's going to be able to speak for himself, but it's, it's a problem for us, those cars that remain on the street during the snow event. So please help us out. Now, another phenomenon that Alderman Green reminded me of today is because of the deep freeze that we're having right now and the thaw cycle, freeze and thaw cycle, many places where you have hillsides, sloped front yard to the street, you will have lots of icing taking place in the street. We're not telling you to do anything about it, just call us so that we can send, send our street department to deal with it and, and salt it, and we'll pay attention to it. This is a natural phenomenon. It will happen because you have a steep, steep sloping front yard in there. When the sun hits it, it's going to start melting a little bit, and then at night, it's going to freeze, and the next day, it's going to build on it, so it's going to keep creeping towards the middle of the road. So let us know where it is. You know, we don't know, we got 230 lane miles of roads in the city of Middletown. Let us know where it is. Give us a call, 343-3169, and our street department will be more than happy to come out and address it. The last comment I will make is Walter Welch. Walter Welch, he retired as our building inspector. Walter Welch, he was really, honestly, he was the most professional and friendly and a gentleman that I've ever worked with. He's always very pleasant, he's always anxious to help his fellow workers, the other code enforcement officers, the other staff in DPW, and the public. Whatever you called him, he'll come out, try to lead you by the hand, whether you want to put a fence, whether you want to put a deck, he'll try to help you out as much as possible. Whenever I called him over the weekend, over holidays, at night, midnight, any emergencies, he's always there. He never complained. You know, he never tried to muscle for, for a couple of hours overtime here or there. He represented us on, on the planning board and ZBA for years. Walter will be, will be really missed. He's a gentleman, again, and I appreciate all his service for the city of Middletown, and, and I wish him the very best, and he deserves very well, enjoyable retirement, I hope, and I wish him the best, and I thank him very much.
Thank you.
Any questions?
Alderman Johnson?
Commissioner, I know we wanted you to have something to do tomorrow, so I've had three communications with respect to ICE. There's a resident on Way Weanda who is very aware when classic Osire doesn't clean the sidewalk. There's a resident on Allen and Pine who was concerned about the hill and wanted to know what is our policy on pre-salting the roads. And the ice flow that Andrew's speaking of is on 12 Lincoln. That's been an annual recurring conversation. The resident feels that some change in the drainage, obviously not at the moment, would rectify it, so I'll give you the details tomorrow, but I just wanted to...
Yeah, no, absolutely. That, that for some reason, Way Weanda Avenue, that property, they, they clear half of their sidewalk, then they leave the other half.
This resident notices that almost immediately.
Yeah, I know, and we will deal with it.
Highland Avenue, St. Teresa's. Same owner. That's the same owner.
They, they did half of it, and council president, he called me over, over the weekend as well, not over the weekend, it was Sunday, Monday.
About Way Weanda?
It was all over. It was like East Main, Monhegan, West Main, Highland Avenue. I mean, it's a lot of businesses.
Yeah, and we are, we are all over it. So what happens is, we have our own properties to take care of, and then we utilize our people in the street department and parks and wrecks to go unshovel and use their machines, and we will pay all, we will charge, we will bill all these people.
Yeah, not to defend anybody, but it was obviously very weird weather. And now you're trying to shovel ice.
Yeah, if you're, exactly. If you didn't get it right, if you did not get to it right away, it's going to happen. By the way, that house on Lincoln Terrace, I remember visiting that site and looking at a catch basin. Yeah, and looking at, they didn't call for a catch basin then, I'll be happy to go again and look at it.
Maybe this year.
I remember going at it and, and going there and visiting it and evaluating it, but again, that's, that's a regular occurrence when you have steep front yard, and then the drainage has to go someplace, and then it's going to freeze after, after the thaw period. And then the next day, it's going to build on it. And so if we don't treat it, if we don't know about it, today I was talking to my guys, we'll have, you know, we just want people to call us, and we'll be happy to go there.
Yeah, I have the same problem with my office. I got the freeze thaw. It looked good, now two hours later, it's not good, and then it looks good, and you got to keep salting, it's frustrating.
Yeah, and then the street, you know, that's our job. We don't expect our residents to pay the penalty for that. We'll be, we'll be happy to go and address, because the street has to remain safe, so we'll be happy to go and address it. We just need to know where it is, because we can't just be there.
12 Lincoln, thank you.
Yes, sir.
For your kind and courteous attention.
Police Chief?
Good evening. To continue with the comments that Jacob made regards to parking, first and foremost, I'd like to recognize his staff. They allow all of us the comforts of staying warm and inside and driving safe, and they allow emergency services to get everywhere, and they're out in the wee hours of the night, the cold weather, and it doesn't just end after the storm, they're out every day cleaning up, so great job to your staff, Jacob. They're doing a great job. In regards to winter parking, once again, we don't want to issue tickets, but it, there's a, there's a purpose for it. We want to make sure that the streets are able to get cleaned, they're able to get services to where they need to be, and that we make it safe for people to commute. So we'll be out there issuing when the winter weather warnings go out. As a reminder, the summons now, the tickets are $100. We did that, you did that, so that we could get some additional compliance. So again, we don't want to do it, but it is part of the process, and if everybody followed along, it would be better for all of us. This past Thursday, Lieutenant Patrick Cunningham left our organization to enter the next chapter of his, his life. He retired after 20 years of service. For those that don't know, Lieutenant Patrick Cunningham, born and raised here in Middletown. Grew up in Middletown, lived in Middletown, lived and breathed in Middletown. So I wish him the best in the next chapters of his life, but he will definitely be missed, and he was a great asset to the organization, to the community. Last thing I have is, we have a police officer exam that'll be offered this year. The test will be on May 3rd. Again, police officer exam, May 3rd, it's been four years since we gave the exam. Applications are out now, so people can get them through civil service, through our website, and then the applications must be returned to civil service by March 31st, by 12 o'clock in the afternoon, 12 noon, they need to be in the hands of Mr. Massey's office. So we welcome people to come out and take it. We encourage our, our residents and anybody else that would like to take it. We do have some openings, so it's a good time to take it, and I wish everybody luck with that. Other than that, I have nothing unless you have questions.
Any question for the police chief? Alderman Tobin?
Is that the, the two and a half inches of snow? So that's myself and DPW. So that was a code that was in place, and when we implemented the winter weather warning, we took it out, but we definitely see the need for it, because the winter weather warning goes out for a certain period of time, but sometimes depending on the volume of snow or ice, we still need to be able to clean streets, and that was the mechanism that we used for that.
Anyone else? Thank you, chief. Public hearings agree with, oh, city clerk, I'm sorry.
That's okay. Not to belabor the point about parking, but I'd be remiss if I didn't mention that the mayor and the chief and the DPW commissioner have authorized that parking lot requirements for permits and time waivers have been waived during the recent snow alerts, and I believe that's going to be the practice going forward to give our residents an additional place to park, to get their cars off the street. You can still sign up for our emergency alerts. We put out those snow alerts on a regular basis. There's an eight, a toll-free number, 845-346-1414, if you don't want to receive the calls. That is updated when there is a snow alert with the timeframe. And that's it, thank you.
Any question for the city clerk? Thank you. Public hearings and grievances?
Oh, I'm sorry. I got confused. We have one public hearing this evening. Notice is hereby given that the city of Middletown will hold a public hearing on Tuesday, February 18th, on or as near to 7:30 PM as possible in the common council chambers, to hear any and all persons wishing to be heard on the proposed zoning amendment to Chapter 475-30, to provide the planning board further discretion regarding renewals of permits for temporary businesses of movable, movable structures. Any all persons wishing to be heard will be given an opportunity to speak either against or for the proposal. The complete proposed zoning amendment is available in the office of the common council clerk, 16 James Street, and on the city website.
It's time the public hearings now open. Maria, do you know what this is for? The temporary business movable structures?
I remember... It has to do with like, temporary, like, for instance, like temporary flowers being sold or some, on the, I believe that's what it has to do.
Okay.
Because it has to go to planning board. Rick, if, if I'm wrong?
So the current code reads that a temporary movable structure can be granted by the planning board for a one-year's time period. After that time period, if that person or individual or that entity wants to renew it, they have to start the entire process over again from scratch, doing the public hearing, the mailings and everything. And we weren't sure if that was really the intent of it, so this gives the planning board the discretion to waive some of those other requirements, or if need be, to call them back in and have the, go through the process if there's a problem or if there's complaints regarding the structure.
Yeah, so there are safeguards if, like, there's complaints or anything, you go back.
Thank you. Anyone from the council? All right, motion to close? Massey, seconded by Alderman Ray, all in favor?
Aye.
Remarks of Alderman, Alderman Massey?
Yeah, I just want to reiterate, Jacob, your guys, your whole department did a tremendous job, and we all thank you for that. Chief, same with your department, thank you guys. And the two retirements, Pat Cunningham, I've known for quite a while, and Walt Welch and I were, been close friends for 40-some years. I wish to both of them the best in their retirement, and thank you for your service to the city of Middletown.
Alderman Witt?
Thank you very much. Yeah, I just wanted to acknowledge the retirements also to Lieutenant Cunningham and Walt Welch, two really good guys, and I remember Lieutenant Cunningham used to come to our second ward Alderman meetings, and he'd sit in the back, and he was always interested. He had property on Wilken Avenue, and, and inevitably, he would end up also answering questions for people, too, so he was a good sport. So Walt Welch is a good guy to the bone, kind-hearted, and I wish them both well. Thank you very much.
Alderman Green?
Thank you. Yeah, I'll echo, echo that. Both Pat and Walter are going to leave some big shoes to fill in the city. I'm sure we'll find people to, to try and take up the task, but both will be sorely missed by us, but well-deserved retirements. Thank you.
Alderman Kleiner?
Thank you. Also, Walter Welch as a building inspector, he, he didn't just go out to criticize, he went out to help you, to help you get the job done, to help you do it right, and that's, that's something that we always appreciated, so I was always glad to have the building inspector go out, and the same thing with Lieutenant Cunningham. And as, as Kevin said, when he was in our second ward constituent meetings, he, he was, he was always willing to do anything he needed done. He, tremendous asset, and, and as a K-9 officer, he was terrific, so he will definitely be missed. And I do wish both of them will. The, if you were making $150,000 a year, that's not bad, would take you 3 million years to make as much money as Elon Musk has. That's a kind of a way of looking at it. So I, I, I didn't know what to say. I'm just very disturbed by what's going on in the lawlessness in the country, so I, I wrote something out, very, I think it's short, and, but I always like to repeat the preamble to the Constitution. We, the people of the United States, in order to form a more perfect union, establish justice, ensure domestic tranquility, provide for the common defense, promote the general welfare, and secure the blessings of liberty to ourselves and our posterity, do ordain and establish this Constitution for the United States of America, not to be thrown away by executive order. So separation of powers, checks and balances, we're flipping the world upside down, and now Germany becomes the hope of Europe, and we send our Neville Shambulans to Munich for appeasement, except we don't have a Winston Churchill to say it's not all right to go in and take another country's land. We have a man, a deadbeat felon, whose heroes are Hannibal Lecter and Al Capone, who could just have his opposition killed. And we have an oligarch who brought, bought the presidency, and Musk and his marauders are wrecking our democratic government. The law be damned. And it was Joseph Goebbels who said, "It's amazing how easy a democracy is to destroy from within." So who will enforce the court orders? That's the key. They've demolished oversight, our inspector generals, anyone who could hold them accountable in the public interest. Hitler gave his brown shirts police power. They became the Gestapo, and he pardoned all his National Socialists, no matter what their crimes. Trump, the destroyer, pardons his January 6th seditionists and armed conspirators. Fear and corruption is the point. Empathy, they have none. That's essential character for caring for people. So where are our local, where are our local Republicans speaking out? They hate facts, they hate truth. And hooray for Daniel Sassoon. She was the MAGA prosecutor who resigned rather than carry, rather than drop the charges against Mayor Adams, and the Assistant U.S. Attorney Haggard Scotten, who said, "I expect you will eventually find someone who is enough of a fool or enough of a coward to file your motion." Well, they did, the motion to drop the charges, but we'll see what comes of that, but it is, in so many cities across the country, people have come out and demonstrated and made their opinions known, and we just hope it's not too late. Thank you.
Alderman Ray?
Good evening. I definitely want to wish Walt Welch and Pat Cunningham outstanding retirement. I remember working with Pat many years ago at this point, with Neighborhood Watch and things like that. Just an absolutely outstanding officer. Middies through and through, the two of them. I think it's spectacular when the people who live and grow here come back and become so impactful in the community they were raised by. Speaking of amazing middies, I do want to shout out my daughter, Caliani, who made states in her wrestling section-nine championship yesterday, and I'm very proud of her. And Middletown as well should also be proud, because the Middletown Varsity Girls Wrestling Team is sending three young ladies to states next week, and I'm very proud of all of them. They have worked so hard, and I'm just very excited, because if you look around at the kids in the city, they are making us proud every day, and we should definitely talk about it. That's all.
Alderman Johnson?
Touche. March 4th, our much anticipated public hearing on good cause eviction legislation. We're expecting a pretty good turnout. I've been in communication with Bravin over the last week or so to make sure we have as many details in place as possible. Mr. Witt and I, in our respective roles, spent three hours with each other at the school board meeting last week, which was good. In my four minutes, I did highlight that we're having this good cause legislation hearing. And also, as you remember, our last meeting, we talked a lot about ICE and immigration things. This was addressed by the mayor at our meeting, and by Mr. Perrino and Bishop Williams at their meeting. At the national level, national school boards has been on top of this issue for several months anticipating this. So at the school board level, the, the information is very clear. If ICE shows up, call your lawyer, and the lawyer will then guide you and tell you what to do, so. Karina was there with a young lady. There's obviously a lot of concern and a lot of fear about getting somebody come and take a child out of my building or not, so, but we're on it, and we'll see how it goes. Thank you.
Alderman Jean Francois?
I would like to thank DPW, the street department, for performing like rock stars, keeping our street clean and safe for the community. I just want to thank everyone that's involved. Thank you.
Alderman Tobin? Nothing this evening.
All right, new business.
Good evening. We have a resolution sponsored by Alderman Tobin authorizing the lending of affordable lights to the Otisville Lions Club for the 35th Annual Otisville Country Fair.
Resolution sponsored by Alderman Tobin, seconded by Alderman Jean Francois. Any discussion? Rope?
Tobin, Jean Francois, Johnson, Ray, Kleiner, Green, Witt, Massey, President Rodriguez, resolution sponsored by Alderman Witt authorizing the closure of streets for the annual Middletown Little League Parade.
Resolution sponsored by Alderman Witt, seconded by Alderman Green. Any discussion? Rope?
Tobin, Jean Francois.
Resolution sponsored by Alderman Witt authorizing the closure of streets for the annual Middletown Little League Parade.
Resolution sponsored by Alderman Witt, seconded by Alderman Green. Any discussion? Rope.
Tobin. Aye. Jean Francois. Aye. Johnson. Aye. Ray. Aye. Kleiner. Aye. Green. Aye. Witt. Aye. Massey. Aye. President Rodriguez. Aye. Carries. Resolution sponsored by Alderman Witt authorizing an agreement with Alex Mills to paint three train murals at the Maple Hill Splash Pad.
Resolution sponsored by Alderman Witt, seconded by Alderman John Francois. Any discussion? Rope.
Tobin. Aye. Jean Francois. Aye. Johnson. Aye. Ray. Aye. Kleiner. Aye. Green. Aye. Witt. Aye. Massey. Aye. President Rodriguez. Aye. Carries. Resolution sponsored by Alderman Massey authorizing a transfer of $7,579 to cover shortages for HVAC repairs.
Resolution sponsored by Alderman Massey, seconded by Alderman Kleiner. Any discussion? Rope.
Tobin. Aye. Jean Francois. Aye. Johnson. Aye. Ray. Aye. Kleiner. Green. Aye. Witt. Aye. Massey. Aye. President Rodriguez. Aye. Carries. Resolution sponsored by Alderwoman Ray authorizing an agreement with the Sullivan County SPCA.
Resolution sponsored by Alderman Ray, seconded by Alderman John Francois. Any discussion? Rope.
Tobin. Aye. Jean Francois. Aye. Johnson. Aye. Ray. Aye. Kleiner. Aye. Green. Aye. Witt. Aye. Massey. Aye. President Rodriguez. Aye. Carries. Resolution sponsored by Alderman Green authorizing a transfer of $7,854.50 within the 2024 Economic Development Department budget for facade improvements.
Resolution sponsored by Alderman Green, seconded by Alderman Ray. Any discussion? Rope.
Tobin. Aye. Jean Francois. Aye. Johnson. Aye. Ray. Aye. Kleiner. Aye. Green. Aye. Witt. Aye. Massey. Aye. President Rodriguez. Aye. Carries. Resolution sponsored by Alderman Kleiner authorizing the issuance of $6 million bonds to pay the cost of the renovation of the new city courthouse.
Resolution sponsored by Alderman Kleiner, seconded by Alderman Green. Any discussion? Alderman Kleiner?